Welcome to study session number twenty one of daily memory lab. In today's study session, we will see round four of supply under GST. Chapter page number thirty two to forty two and then we will see round three of. Page number one to seven of charge under GST, charge of GST. And then we will also see round two of what we read yesterday, page number nineteen to page number twenty seven. After finishing this, we will see today's fresh quota of again page number maybe five to seven pages. So let us begin page number thirty two of supply under GST. So this is something that we saw yesterday as well. So quickly to recall, I am not going to read this entire thing, I will just summarize this and then we will proceed further. Two establishments belonging to the same entity if they have two separate registrations. It doesn't matter whether they are located within the same state or whether they are located one state after the other. Any movement between those two establishments will be treated as supply. If an establishment has, if a company has or if a business has two establishments. Located within the same state and they are registered under the same registration. Then they will be treated as single entity and the stock movement between those two entities will not be treated as supply. And any establishment located uh across two states. Any supply without consideration with between them or with consideration between them is definitely treated as supply. So let us go to the next uh next thing as per this schedule. Supply of goods or services or both between an employer and employee. In terms of the definition of related person given above, employer and employee are related persons. However, services provided by an employee to the employer in the course of or in relation to his employment. Are outside the scope of GST. Gifts by employer to employee. Further, Pravisato Para two of Schedule one provides that gifts up to fifty thousand in a financial year. By an employer to an employee shall not be treated as supply of goods or services or both however. Gifts of value more than fifty thousand made without consideration or supply and are subject to GST. When made in the course or furtherance of business. The term gift has not been defined in the GST law. In common parlance, gift is made without consideration, it is voluntary in nature and it is made occasionally. It cannot be demanded as a matter of right by the employee and the employee cannot move to a court of law for obtaining a gift. Perquisites by employer to employee since services by an employee. To the employer in the course of or in relation to his employment are outside the scope of GST. Supply by the employer to the employee in terms of contractual agreement entered into between the employer and the employee. Will not be subject to GST. Any prerequisite provided by the employer to its employees in terms of contractual agreement entered into between. The employer and the employee are in are. In view of the services provided by employee to the employer in relation to its employment. It follows therefrom that requisites provided by the employer to the employee in terms of contractual agreement. Entered into between the employer and the employee will not be subject to GST. Further, input tax credit scheme under GST does not allow I T C of membership of a club, health and fitness center. It follows therefore that if such services are provided free of charge to all the employees by the employer. Then the same will not be subject to GST. The same would hold true for free housing to the employees when the same is provided in terms of contract between. The employer and the employee and it is part and parcel of the C T C. Okay, principal agent. Para three of schedule one. Supply of. Goods by a principal to his agent without consideration where the agent undertakes to supply such goods on behalf of the principal. Is considered as supply. Similarly, supply of goods by an agent to his principal without consideration where the agent undertakes. To receive such goods on behalf of the principal is considered as supply. Points which merit consideration in this regard are as follows. Only supply of goods and not supply of services is covered here. Supply of goods between principal and agent without consideration is also supply. Thus, the supply of services between principal and agent and vice versa would require consideration. To be present so as to be considered as supply and thus making it liable to GST. In order to determine whether a particular principal agent relationship falls within the ambit of para three of schedule one. As discussed above or not, the deciding factor is. Whether the invoice for the further supply of goods on behalf of the principal is being issued by the agent or not. So in case if the agent, in case the agent issues the invoice for further supply on behalf of the principal. Then it is to be clubbed and uh the transaction between. Principal to the agent, transfer between principal to agent will also be taxable. In case the agent issues the things separately. Then it will not be clubbed. In other words, the crucial point is whether or not the agent has the authority to pass or receive the title. Of the goods on behalf of the principal. Where the invoice for further supply is being issued by the agent in his name then any provision of goods from the principal. To the agent would fall within the fold of para three above. However, where the invoice is issued by the agent to the customer in the name of the principal. Such agent shall not fall within the ambit of para three above. Similarly, where the goods being procured by the agent on behalf of the principal or invoiced in the name of the agent, then further. Then further provision of the said good goods by the agent to the principal would be covered by para three above. Where the invoice is issued by the agent to the customer in the name of principal itself, then para three will not get triggered. If invoice itself is issued by the agent in the name of agent itself, then yes para three of schedule one will apply. Anmol appoints Bolu to procure certain goods from the market. Bolu identifies various suppliers who can provide the goods as desired by Anmol. And asks the supplier to send the goods and to the and to issue the invoice directly to Anmol. In this scenario, Bolo is only acting as the procurement agent and has in no way involved himself. In the supply or receipt of the goods hence in accordance with the provisions of this act. Bolo is not an agent of Anmol for supply of goods in terms of para three of schedule one. Money Money Bank, a banking company, appoints Mandar, an auctioneer, to auction certain goods. The auctioneer arranges for auction. And identifies the potential bidders. The highest bid is accepted and the goods are sold to the highest bidder by Money Money Bank. The invoice for the supply of the goods is issued by Money Money Bank to the successful bidder. In this scenario, the auctioneer is merely providing the auctioneering services. With no role played in the supply of the goods. Even in this scenario, Mandar is not an agent of Money Money Bank for the supply of goods in terms of para three of schedule one. Gautam an artist appoints Gambir. So we have seen this example where Gambir himself will make invoice in his own name. Uh therefore, whatever the consideration when the goods that have gone between Gautam and Gambir, that itself will be treated as. Supply in this scenario Gambir is not merely providing auctioneering service but is also supplying the painting on behalf of Gautam to the bidder. And has authority to transfer the title, therefore this scenario is covered under para three. C N F or commission agent takes possession of the goods from the principal and issues the invoice in his own name. In such cases, the C N F commission agent is an agent of the principal. For the supply of goods in terms of para three of schedule one. The disclosure or non-disclosure of the name of the principal is immaterial in such situation. Ravi sells agricultural produce by utilizing the services of Kavi who is a commission agent. As per the A P M C Act of the state. Kavi identifies the buyers and sells the agricultural produce on behalf of Ravi for which he charges a commission from Ravi. As per the A P M C Act, the commission agent is a person who buys or sells agricultural produce on behalf of his principal. Or facilitates buying and selling of agricultural produce on behalf of his principal. And receives by way of remuneration a commission or percentage upon the amount involved in such transaction. In cases where the invoice is issued by Kavi to the buyer, then he is an agent covered under para three. However, in case where the invoice is directly issued by Ravi to the buyer, the commission agent doesn't fall under the category of para three. Clarification of issues pertaining to del creditor agent. A question was posed by the industry whether supply between a principal and a del creditor agent would also get covered under schedule one. The government clarified the doubt about doubt of the industry by way of clarification. Before going through the clarification, let us first understand what is meant by a D C A. In commercial trade parlance, D C A is a selling agent who is engaged by a principal. To assist in supply of goods or services by contacting potential buyers on behalf of the principal. The factor that differentiates a D C A from other agents is that the D C A guarantees the payment to the supplier. In such scenarios where the buyer fails to make payment to the principal by the due date. D C A makes the payment to the principal on behalf of the buyer and effectively providing. And insurance against default by the buyer. And for this reason, the commission paid to the D C A may be relatively higher than that paid to a normal agent. In order to guarantee timely payment to the supplier, the D C A can resort to various methods including. Extending short term transaction based loans to the buyer or paying the supplier himself and recovering the amount. Uh from the buyer with some interest at a later date. This loan is to be repaid by the buyer along with an interest to the D C A at a rate mutually agreed between. D C A and the buyer. Okay, whether a D C A fall under. D C A fall under the ambit of agent under para three of schedule one. Okay, now let us see based on the circular. In case the invoice for supply of goods is issued by the supplier to the customer. Either himself or through D C A, the D C A does not fall under the ambit of agent. In case the invoice for supply of goods is issued by the D C A in his own name. Then the D C A would fall under the ambit of agent. Whether the temporary short term transaction based loan, short term transaction based loan. Extended by the D C A to the recipient for which interest is charged by the D C A is to be included in the value of goods being supplied by. The supplier where D C A is not an agent. Para three is not an agent under para three. In such a scenario, following activities are taking place. Supply of goods from supplier to their buyer to the recipient. Supply of agency services from D C A to the supplier or the recipient or both. Supply of extension of loan services by the D C A to the recipient. It is clarified that in cases where the D C A is not an agent under para three of schedule one. The temporary short term transaction based loan being provided by D C A to the buyer is a supply of service by the D C A. To the recipient on principal to principal basis and it is an independent supply. Okay, therefore, the interest being charged by the D C A would not form part of the value of supply of goods by the supplier. Interest being charged by the D C A would not form part of the value of supply of goods. By the supplier where D C A agent, uh D C A is an agent under para three. And makes payment to the principal on behalf of the buyer and charges interest to the buyer for delayed payment. Along with the value of goods being supplied, whether the interest will form part of. The value of supply of goods also or not. Okay, in such a scenario, supply of goods by supplier to the D C A, further supply of goods by the D C A to the recipient. And the supply of agency services by the D C A to the supplier or the recipient or both. Okay, extension of credit by D C A to the recipient. It is clarified that in cases where D C A is an agent under para three of schedule one. The temporary short term based, uh short term transaction based credit being provided by the D C A to the buyer. No longer retains its character of an independent supply and it is subsumed in the supply of the goods. By the D C A to the recipient. It is emphasized that the activity of extension of credit. By the D C A to the recipient would not be considered as a separate supply. As it is in context of the supply of goods made by D C A to the recipient. It is further clarified that the value of the interest charged for such credit would be required to be included in the value of. Goods supplied by the D C A to the recipient as per section fifteen subsection two clause. Subsection two clause D. Mister handsome, a del creditor agent of Charm Limited agrees to raise invoices in his own name. And also guarantees for the realization of payments from customers to Charm Limited. In order to realize the payments from customers on time, he extends transaction based loan to them and charges interest for the same. For the month of March, sale of goods by Mister Handsome in his capacity, in his D C A capacity is two lakh eighty thousand. And the interest earned from the set customers for the short term credit facility provided is twenty thousand. Further, commission charged by Charm Limited in respect of D C A services is provided is thirty thousand. The value of supply of. Goods to customers is and value of supply of agency services to Charm Limited is. Commission charged from. Okay, charged against Charm Limited in respect of D C A services, so the total thing is two lakh eighty plus twenty thousand will be added. And then this thirty thousand will be separate, so answer is C, three lakhs and thirty thousand. Okay, on that note, we will stop here. The first segment is complete. Let us go to the second segment which is charge under GST, the first seven pages, charge of GST. Okay, first seven pages. Introduction, power to levy tax is drawn from the constitution of India. To pay way for the introduction of GST, hundred first constitutional amendment act of two thousand sixteen was passed. By virtue of this act, enabling provision was made to levy GST on supply of goods or services or both in India. Central excess duty, state VAT and certain state specific taxes and service tax were subsumed into a comprehensive GST. The very basis for the charge of tax in any taxing statute is the taxable event, that is the occurrence of. The event which triggers levy of tax. As discussed earlier, the taxable event under GST is supply. Okay, CGST SGST are levied on all interstate supplies of goods or services while IGST is levied on all. Interstate supply of goods or services. The provisions relating to levy and the collection of CGST and IGST are contained in section nine of CGST Act. Twenty seventeen, section five of I G S T Act twenty seventeen. Let us now have a fundamental idea of interstate supply and interstate supply. As a general rule, where the location of the supplier and the place of supply of goods or services are in the same state or union territory. It is treated as interstate supply of goods or services respectively. Similarly, where the location of supplier and place of supply of goods or services are in two different states or union territories or in the state and the union territory. It is treated as interstate supply. Okay, concept of place of supply, location of supplier is detailedly discussed in place of supply chapter. Okay, relevant definitions. Central tax means the central goods and service tax levied under section nine of the CGST. Integrated goods and service tax levied under section five of, I think section five of IGST Act. State tax means the tax levied under any state goods and service tax act. Goods means every kind of mobile property other than money and securities but includes actionable claim. Growing crops, grass and the things attached to or forming part of the land which are agreed to be severed before. Supply or under a contract of supply, two clause fifty two. Electronic commerce means the supply of goods or services or both. Including digital products over digital or electronic networks, two clause forty four. Electronic commerce operator means any person who owns, operates or manages a digital or electronic facility. Or platform for electronic commerce. Exempt supply, exempt supply means supply of any goods or services or both which attracts nil rate of tax or which may be wholly exempt. From tax under section eleven or under section six of the IGST Act and includes a non-taxable supply. Non-taxable supply means a supply of goods or services or both which is not leviable to tax under this act or. The IGST Act, okay. Aggregate turnover, it means the aggregate value of all taxable supplies excluding. The value of inward supplies on which tax is payable by a person on reverse charge basis. Exempt supply is also included under aggregate value, export of goods and services or both. And interstate supply of persons having the same permanent account number. To be computed on all India basis but excludes central tax, state tax and union territory tax and integrated tax senses. Prescribed means prescribed by rules made under this act on the recommendations of the council. Business includes any trade, commerce, manufacture, profession, vocation, adventure, wager or any other similar activity. Whether or not it is for a pecuniary benefit. Business includes any activity or transaction in connection with or incidental or ancillary to A above. Any activity or transaction in the nature of A above, whether or not there is volume, frequency, continuity or regularity of such transaction. Supply or acquisition of goods including capital assets and services in connection with commencement or closure of business. Provision by a club, association, society or any such body of body for a subscription. Or any other consideration of the facilities or benefits to its members as the case may be. Admission for a consideration of persons to any premises and services supplied by a person as the holder of an office. Which has been accepted by him in the course or furtherance of his trade or profession or vocation. Activities of a race club including by way of totalizer or a license to bookmaker. Or activities of a licensed bookmaker in such club. Any activity or transaction undertaken by the central government, state government or any local authority in which they are engaged as. Public authorities, section two clause seventeen. Consideration. In relation to the supply of goods or services or both, it includes any payment made or to be made whether in money or otherwise. In respect of, in response to or for the inducement of the supply of goods or services or both. Whether by the recipient or by any other person but shall not include any subsidy given by the central government. Or a state government, the monetary value of any act or forbearance in respect of, in response to. Or for the inducement of the supply of goods or services or both. Whether by the recipient or by any other person but shall not include any subsidy given by the central government or. A state government. However, a deposit given in respect of the supply of goods or services or both. Shall not be considered as payment made for such supply unless the supplier applies such deposit. Has consideration for the said supply, two clause thirty one. Person includes an individual H U F, company, firm, L L P, A O P, B O I. Whether incorporated or not in India or outside India. Any corporation established by or under any central, state, provincial act or government company. As defined in section two clause forty five of the Companies Act twenty thirteen. Any body corporate incorporated by or under the laws of a country outside India. A cooperative society registered under any law relating to cooperative societies, local authority. Central or state government, society as defined under society's registration act. Trust, every artificial juridical person not falling above. Recipient, recipient of supply of goods or services means where a concentration is payable for the supply of. Goods or services or both, the person who is liable to pay that consideration. Okay, where no consideration is payable for the supply of goods, the person to whom. The goods are being delivered or made available or to whom the possession or use of the goods is given or made available and where. No consideration is payable for the supply of a service, the person to whom the service is rendered and any. Reference to a person to whom a supply is made shall be construed as a reference to the recipient of the supply. And shall include an agent acting as such on behalf of the recipient in relation to the goods or services are both supplied. Section two clause ninety three. Registered person, it means a person who is registered under section twenty five but does not include a person having. Unique identity number. Reverse charge, it means the liability to pay tax by the recipient of supply of goods or services. Or both, instead of the supplier of such goods or services or both under section nine subsection three. Nine subsection four or under section five subsection three, five subsection four of the IGST Act, section two clause ninety eight. Services means anything other than goods, money and securities but includes. Activities relating to the use of money or its conversion by cash or by any other mode from one form or currency or denomination to another form. Currency or denomination for which a separate consideration is charged. Section two clause one not two, explanation for the removal of doubts, it is hereby clarified that the expression services includes. Facilitating or arranging transactions in securities. Supplier in relation to any goods or services or both shall mean the person supplying the said goods or services or both. And shall include an agent acting as such on behalf of such supplier in relation to the goods or services or both. Supplied. However, a person who organizes or arranges directly or indirectly supply of specified actionable claims. Including a person who owns, operates or manages digital or electronic platform for such supply. Shall be deemed to be a supplier of such actionable claims, whether such actionable claims are supplied by him through him. And whether consideration in money or money's worth, including virtual digital assets. For supply of such actionable claims is paid or conveyed to him or through him or placed at his disposal in any manner. And all the provisions of this act shall apply to such supplier at specified actionable claims. As if he is the supplier liable to pay tax in relation to the supply of such actionable claims. Taxable supply means a supply of goods and or services which is leviable to tax under CGST Act. Taxable person means a person who is registered or liable to be registered under section twenty two or section twenty four of. The CGST Act. It is important to note that a person who is liable to be registered but not but does not take a registration and remains. An unregistered person shall be construed as a taxable person, similarly a person not liable to register. But has taken a voluntary registration is also considered as a taxable person. So we have completed segment number two. Page number one to seven has been revised, now let us go to. The third segment, page number nineteen to twenty seven, whatever we studied yesterday. Page number nineteen, chapter three. Services provided by an advocate, including a senior advocate or firm of advocates by way of legal services directly or indirectly. Legal service means any service provided in relation to advice, consultancy or assistance in any branch of law in any manner and includes. Representational services before any court, tribunal or authority. So individual including advocate, including a senior advocate or firm of advocates, any business entity located in the taxable territory. Services supplied by an arbitral tribunal to a business entity, services by way of sponsorship to anybody. Any body corporate or partnership firm. Services supplied by the central government, state government, union territory or local authority to a business entity excluding. Renting of immovable property and services specified below. Specified by, uh services by the department of posts and ministry of railways. Specified by, uh, services by the Department of Posts and Ministry of Railways, Indian Railways. Services in relation to an aircraft or a vessel, inside or outside the precincts of a port or an airport, transport of goods or passengers. To a business entity, which means it will be under reverse charge but it is excluded the following things, so these things will still continue to be in forward charge. Services supplied by central government excluding the Ministry of Railways, state government, union territory. No, no, services supplied by central government. So this is under within brackets. So services supplied by central government, state government, union territory or local authority by way of renting of immovable property to a registered person under C G S T Act. Then the registered person has to make payment again except Ministry of Railways. Services by way of renting of residential dwelling to a registered person. Services by way of renting of any immovable property other than residential dwelling. Services supplied to a director of a company, body corporate, to the set company or body corporate. So here body corporate has to pay the uh, tax, director does not need to pay. Services supplied by an insurance agent to any person carrying on insurance business, so the insurance business has to pay G S T, not the agent. Services supplied by a recovery agent to a banking company or a financial institution or a non banking company, again, recovery agent doesn't have to pay G S T, the banking company or the N B F C has to pay the G S T. Supply of services by a music composer, photographer, artist or the like by way of transfer or permitting the use or enjoyment of a copyright covered under section thirteen subsection one clause A of the Copyright Act nineteen fifty seven relating to original dramatic musical or artistic work to a music company producer and the like. So in this case, music composer, photographer, artist need not pay G S T, the music company or the music producer should have to pay. Supply of services by an author by way of transfer or permitting the use or enjoyment of a copyright covered under section thirteen subsection one A relating to original literary work to a publisher. So author doesn't have to do, publisher located in taxable territory has to do, however, author can choose to pay tax under forward charge if he has taken registration under C G S T Act and filed a declaration in the prescribed form that he exercises the option to pay G S T on the said service under forward charge in accordance with section nine subsection one and to comply with all the provisions as they apply to a person liable for paying the tax in relation to the supply of any goods or services and that he shall not withdraw the said op- option within a period of one year from the date of exercising such option. And also if he makes a declaration on the invoice issued by him in the prescribed form to the publisher, okay. Supply of services by the members of overseeing committee to the Reserve Bank of India, so the my committee members need not pay G S T, R B A should pay. Services supplied by individual direct selling agents other than a body corporate partnership or limited liability partnership firm to bank or non banking financial companies. So again, the agents need not pay, the banking company N B F C located has to pay. Services provided by business facilitator to a banking company, so business facilitator doesn't have to pay, banking company has to pay. So we have to read till page number twenty seven, okay. Services provided by an agent of business correspondent to a business correspondent, so business correspondent has to pay tax, not the agent. Sir, security services uh, provided to a registered person. However, nothing contained in this entry shall apply to a department or establishment of the central government or state government or union territory. Local authority governmental agencies which has taken registration under C G S T Act only for the purpose of deducting tax under section fifty one of the said act and not for making a taxable supply of goods or services. A registered person paying tax under composition scheme. So for these situations, this provision will not apply, this entry will not apply, other cases. So if I hire, if I am a registered company, a normal company and I hire a security service, then I don't the security service doesn't have to charge G S T, I have to charge it based on reverse charge and remit it to the government. Okay, fifteenth entry, services provided by way of renting of any motor vehicle designed to carry passengers where the cost of fuel is included in the consideration charged from the service recipient provided to a body corporate. Any other, any person other than, so I think this is like the cab facility provided. So corporate cap facilities will be there, isn't it, so for this situation, I don't think uh I don't think the, the driver or the taxi company need to pay G S T, the company who is availing the services has to pay G S T. Okay, services of lending of securities under securities lending scheme of C B as amended. Lender that is a person who deposits securities registered in his name. The name of or in the name of any other person duly authorized in his behalf. So who has to pay G S T, borrower has to pay G S T, that is a person who borrows the securities under the scheme through an approved intermediary of C B. Okay, all the above services have also been notified for reverse charge under I G S T Act. Wide notification number ten dated twenty eight, six and two thousand seventeen as amended. In addition to them, following service is also notified by the said notification under reverse charge for I G S T purposes. Any service supplied by any person who is located in a tax non taxable territory to any person located in the taxable territory other than tax, non taxable online recipient located in the taxable territory. Thus in case of import of service, tax is payable by the person importing such service. For purpose of the notification, notifying the above services under reverse charge mechanism, the following explanations shall apply. The person who pays or is liable to pay freight for the transportation of goods by road in goods carriage located in the taxable territory shall be treated as the person who receives the service for the purpose of this notification, body corporate. Body corporate has the same meaning as assigned to it in clause eleven of section two of the Companies Act. As per section two eleven of clause eleven of the Companies Act, body corporate or corporation includes a company incorporated outside India but does not include a cooperative society or any other body corporate, not being a company as defined in this act which the central government by notification specify in this behalf. The business entity located in the taxable territory who is litigant, applicant or petitioner as the case may be, shall be treated as the person who receives the legal services for the purpose of this notification. The words and expressions used not defined in reverse charge notification but defined in the C G S T I G S T Act and the U T G S T Act shall have the same meanings as assigned to them in those apps. Limited liability formed and registered under the provisions of the L L P Act shall also be considered as a partnership firm or a firm. Insurance agent means the agent licensed under section forty two of the Insurance Act who receives, agrees to receive payment by way of commission or other remuneration in consideration of his soliciting or procuring insurance business including business relating to the continuance, renewal or revival of policies of insurance. Renting of immovable property means allowing, permitting or granting access, entry, occupation, use or any such facility wholly or partly in an immovable property with or without the transfer of possession or control of the said immovable property and includes letting, leasing, licensing or other similar arrangements in respect of immovable property. Provisions of reverse charge notification in so far as they apply to the central government, state government shall also apply to the parliament, state legislature, courts and tribunals. Okay, so from here, we will begin our today's quota. Maybe four to five new pages or five to six new pages we will read. So this is completed. This is completed, now let us start from page number twenty eight. Person liable to pay G S T on G T A service. Rate is five percentage which is two point five plus two point five or I G S T five percentage where G S, where G T A has not taken the input tax credit on goods and services used in supplying G T A service. There can be either cases of, either of the cases where G T exercises the option to pay itself. Option to itself pay G S T at the said rate or does not exercise the option to pay itself G S T at the said rate on services supplied by it or twelve percentage. G S T services are taxable at two rates, one of five percentage and the other is twelve percentage where G T A exercises the option to pay option to itself pay G S T at the said rate on services supplied by it. In this case, there is no restriction on availing I T C on goods or services used in supplying G T A service by the G T A. In the following paragraphs, we have explained as to who is the person liable to pay tax in case of each of the above two rates. Person liable to pay tax under G T A service where recipient is one of the specified recipients. Recipient of a G T A service is the person who pays or is liable to pay G uh, liable to pay freight for transportation of goods by roads in, by road in carriage located in the taxable territory, okay. Registered G T A exercises to, exercises the option to itself pay tax. Okay, the English is not so great here, so what do they mean here is registered G T A exercises the option to pay forward charge mechanism, they themselves choose to pay the tax. So in that situation, they will choo, they will uh, charge at twelve percentage, forward charge. Person liable to pay G T, G S T is G T himself, okay. The second situation is ex- registered G T A excess to pay the tax, they themselves again will pay the tax but they will charge at five percentage forward tax. Person liable to pay G S T is G T A. In case G T A does not access to the option to pay the tax themselves, so they say that I don't want to pay tax. I will just run the vehicle for you, G S T and all you take care. So in this situation, reverse charge will come, tax rate will become five percentage, person liable to pay G S T is the person who has taken the G S T service. Where recipient is other than the specified recipient, unregistered individual, G S T will be exempt, okay, exemptions after. We will deal with, we will deal this. So for this situation, if you are going for five percentage, the input tax credit option, the G T A cannot avail. So whether it is as per forward charge mechanism or reverse charge mechanism, if the G T A said that I don't have much of I T C so I, it's not going to be much of use for me, so I am not going to take I T C, so in that situation, G S T rate is five percentage. If the G T A says that, no, no, I have lots of I T C and I will be taking I T C then the G S T rate will be twelve percentage and it will definitely be a forward charge mechanism. Person liable to pay G S T on renting of motor vehicle service. Service by way of renting of any motor vehicle designed to carry passengers where the cost of fuel is included in the consideration charged from the service recipient are taxable at the following two rates. Again, five percentage provided, supplier of services has taken only the limited I T C input services in the name of, sorry, sorry, input services in the same line of business or twelve percentage where supplier of services opts to pay G S T at the said rate. In this case, there is no restriction on availing I T C on goods or services used in supplying renting of motor vehicles service by the supplier of service, okay. In the following paras, we have explained as to who is the person liable to pay tax when G S T is payable at five percentage, supplier is other than a body corporate. In this situation, if the recipient is a body corporate, then reverse charge and G S T is payable by the recipient. Supplier is not a body corporate, recipient is also not a body corporate, then it is forward charge mechanism. Person liable to pay G S T is the person who drives the vehicle and G S T is payable at five percentage when supplier is body corporate. Forward charge, okay, when G S T is payable at twelve percentage, definitely forward charge. The person providing service himself should pay G S T. Okay. Okay, I am the car driving company, I mean, I am the car driving person. I am not a company, but my client is a company, in that situation, client will pay G S T. I am a car driving person, I am a company. It doesn't matter whether my client is a company or not, because I am a company, I have to do tax as per forward charge. But I have two options, whether to go for five percentage or twelve percentage depending on the input availability credit, input credit availability. Let's say the last situation, I am not a body corporate, but my client is a body corporate, in that situation I still have to pay G S T. No, 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 I am not a company, but my client is also not a company. In that situation, forward charge will come, so it depends on the client, if the client is a body corporate, then it doesn't matter who is the supplier. Reverse charge will happen, if the client is not a body corporate, then it doesn't matter who the supplier is. It is going to be forward charge mechanism, got it. Okay, it is important to note that when any service is placed under R C M the supplier shall not charge any tax from the service recipient as this is the pro- settled procedure under R C M, thus the notification specifies that R C M is applicable here only when the supplier does not issue invoice charging G S T at a twelve percentage from the service recipient. Now, there may rise a doubt as to whether R C M is applicable on service of renting of motor vehicle designed to carry passengers or service of transportation of passengers. It is clarified that there is a clear distinction between the two services, which is as under. Two services fall under different headings in the tariff. Services of renting of motor vehicles designed to carry passenger covers renting of motor vehicle for transportation of passengers for a period of time where the renter defines how and when the vehicles will be operated, determining schedules, routes and other operational consideration. Passenger transport services covers passenger transport services over predetermined routes on predetermined schedule. Accordingly, where the body corporate hires the motor vehicle for transportation of employees for a period of time during which the motor vehicle shall be at the disposal of the body corporate, the service would fall under services of renting of motor vehicles designed to carry passengers and the body corporate shall be liable to pay G S T on the uh, as per R C M, thus reverse charge would apply on act of renting of vehicles by body corporate. And in such a case, it is for the body corporate to use the vehicle in the manner as it likes, subject to agreement with the person providing vehicle on rent. However, are the body corporate avails passenger transportation service for specific journeys, voyages and does not take the vehicle on rent for any particular period of time, their service would fall under passenger transportation service and the body corporate shall not be liable to pay G S T on the same under R C M. So passenger transport services cover passenger transport services over predetermined routes on predetermined schedules, so it's like I am a company and I have booked tickets on, of my team members in Indigo Flight or some Spice Jet, so that's a passenger transportation service, I don't hire the vehicle or anything. The vehicle already has a predetermined trip, so I just avail you know, book, book one ticket and get myself transported or my team members transported, in that situation, there is no R C M. But let's say I hired a cap facility for my, cap for my employees to provide pickup and drop facility every day. So I have hired the vehicle along with the driver, so in that situation, the G T A concept will apply. Taxability of remuneration paid to the director. In order to determine the levability of tax on the remuneration paid to the directors we first need to ascertain whether the director is an employee of the company or not. Following two situations are possible. Services provided by the independent directors or those directors by whatever name called who are not employees of the set company to such Services provided by the independent directors or those directors by whatever name called, who are not employees of the set company to such company. Instead of remuneration as the, okay, they are using again. In lieu again very badly, very bad usage. To such company with the remuneration as the consideration for the set services. Are clearly outside the scope of schedule three of GST act and are therefore taxable. As seen in the tax, as seen in the table given above. Illustrating the reverse charges entry, such a remuneration paid to the directors is taxable in the hands of the company on reverse charge basis. In case where it is asserted that a director irrespective of name and designation is an employee. Next step would be to examine whether all the activities performed by the director are in the course of employer-employee relationship. Or is there an any, any element of contract for service. The part of director's remuneration which are declared as salaries in the books of company are subject to TDS. Under section one ninety two of the Income Tax Act. And are not taxable for consideration for services by an employee to the employer in the course of. Or in relation to his employment in terms of Para One Schedule Three. Further, the part of employee director's remuneration. Which is declared separately other than salaries in the company's accounts and subject to TDS under section one eighty four J of the act as. Fees for. Professional or technical services are treated as consideration for providing such services which are outside the scope of Schedule Three. And therefore is taxable. Besides, as already discussed. The recipient of the set services, that is the company, is liable to discharge the applicable GST on it on reverse charge basis. Tax on services supplied by director of a company in his personal capacity such as. Renting of immobile property to the company or body corporate are not payable under reverse charge mechanism. Tax on services supplied by director of a company or body corporate to the said. Company or body corporate is payable by the company or body corporate under reverse charge mechanism. It is clarified that services supplied by a director of a company or body corporate to the company or body corporate in his private or personal capacity. Such as services supplied by way of renting of immobile property are not taxable under RCM. Only those services supplied by director of company or body corporate which are supplied by him. Or as or in the capacity of director of that company or body corporate shall be taxable. Under RCM in the hands of the company or body corporate. Sindhu Transporters and Unregistered GTA provides the services of transportation of goods by road. To Bindusar Manufacturers. Registered under GST, GST is payable by, of course, the provider is an unregistered GTA. But the service recipient is registered under GST, therefore it is to be paid by Bindusar Manufacturers. In what rate? Okay. In case, it it depends, right, um. See, unregistered GTA cannot avail input tax credit. Therefore, that ITC provision will not be applicable to Sindhu Transporters. Therefore, the answer is Bindusar Manufacturers. The RCM payable by. Uh this person is be at five percentage, okay. Neel Anchal Chamber of Com- Commerce. Neel Anchal Chamber of Commerce organized a business summit, Safal Private Limited. A manufacturer of ready-made garments sponsored the summit. And paid a sponsorship fee of one lakh twenty thousand to Neel Anchal Chamber of Commerce, Mister Godbole. How do you read this? Godbole or Godbole? How would you read this? Looks like a Marathi name, okay. Godbole, an independent director of Safal Private Limited. Provided the services worth rupees fifty thousand to the company. The value of on which Safal Private Limited is liable to pay GST is how much? Okay, there are two supplies here. One is manufacturer, the Safal Private Limited has sponsored the summit. And paid a sponsorship fee. So what is the provision that we saw here? We saw today, right? Services provided by way of sponsorship to any body corporate or partnership firm. Any person, the recipient is body corporate or partnership firm located in the terr- taxable territory. So here, Safal Private Limited is the one who is providing service, is providing sponsorship. And it is giving to Neel Anchal Chamber of Commerce, which is not a company or a firm. So it's like just an association of person. So will RCM apply or not is my question. I don't think so RCM will apply just because you see sponsorship. Here, this director of Safal Private Limited provided services worth fifty thousand to the company. See, in this case. The value on which Safal Private Limited is liable to pay GST is fifty thousand. This, this company has to pay. Okay. Now, manufacturer of ready-made garments sponsored. Sponsorship fee and paid a sponsorship fee. Services provided by way of sponsorship to any, okay, so here. Neel Anchal Chamber of Commerce is the person who is actually providing sponsorship service. And body corporate or partnership firm is the one who is actually getting a, I know. They get to sponsor this thing. So they are the, the Neel Anchal Chamber of Commerce is the service provider. That Safal Private Limited is the service recipient and they happen to be a body corporate. So here in the sponsorship service, RCM will happen. So for that hundred and twenty thousand or one lakh twenty thousand that is charged by Neel Anchal Chamber of Commerce. This guy Safal Private Limited has to pay GST on that amount. And for the independent director of fifty thousand that Godbole has charged, even for that. This company has to pay GST. So totally chargeable amount is one lakh seventy thousand. So on that note, we will stop here, we will start this taxable by e-commerce or notified services. We will start from tomorrow. So we'll stop here, page number. Thirty three. Today is twenty fourth of October. Okay, I hope this session was useful. Thank you for joining. I will see you tomorrow. Thank you and bye bye.